All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Lake Mills City Council, May 17, 2022. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Ms. Quinow?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Mr. Bishop? Ms. Bishop?
Here.
It's that seat.
Thank you.[33.92][33.92][laughing]
All right, can we all please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, thank you. Next is correction and/or approval of city council minutes of May 3, 2022. Any comment on that?
I move adoption of the city council minutes of May 3, 2022.
I'll second.
I do have a quick change on the board reports. The Fisher Go sign, Fisher should be spelled F-I-S-C-H-E-R apostrophe S. And other than that, all those in favor? Raise your hand and aye. Aye. All right, that's a 5-0. Correspondence. Ms. Quinow, do you want to start with that?
Sure. I had several emails with regard to EMS and the concerns about whether or not we are considering more than just one plan. There was an email regarding the Planning Commission meeting observations and the concerns about the costs associated with using meet and hunt and their looking for efficiency. There was another email about Sandy Beach proposals, which kind of went into how was that going to play out, especially with the EDC. The library expansion, there was an email from one of the library board members with regard to the historical elements and how there would be state required meetings and correspondents to discuss whether or not that any kind of rehabilitation or expansion would meet the certain needs in order for the building to retain its historical status. I'm struggling with words today. Its historical...
Character.
Thank you. Character, yeah. And/or but status, because the status is what's more important. But it's like there's some kind of registration that apparently the library is a registered historical building.
The library is.
Yes. And then another email about concerns about the library board meeting and purchasing property without discussing, and then the Sandy Beach, about the update compared to other places that they find similar.
Wow, thank you. And you did well with your cold today, so.
Thanks. I'm trying to not sound like a squeaky wheel.
All right. Mrs. Bishop?
Yes, I received some of the same, but I'll go down the list. I received an email asking about when the channel will be dredged in the mill pond and discussing the difficulties of getting boats in and out, and basically it's impassable right now. I received an email asking that we keep EMS in the city. This person had an incident in the last week, and they said there was a five-minute response time, and they were very happy with that and very pleased with the service they received. I received questions, some were from Ms. Quinow, about the meet and hunt contract and meet and hunt's participation at planning commission meetings and in regard to the comprehensive plan. I received an email detailing the Economic Development Commission discussion on the Sandy Beach restaurant proposals. I received an email with a question about the Bartles Beach cost to the city for the port in place material, specifically the bond that the resolution was passed last meeting. I received the same emails as Ms. Quinow regarding the historical significance of the library building. I received an email in support of the cafe ordinance that is on our agenda tonight. And then I also had correspondence about ATV, UTV use in the city and a ordinance that I am proposing and will be in front of the council shortly.
So busy two weeks.
Yes.
I had a lot of the same emails, I won't repeat the same content that the two of you have repeated, but I did also have a zoning question that came to me, and then a discussion on the fees for community organizations as far as the $40 fee for using the parks and whatnot. Ms. Curler?
I received many of the same contacts that Ms. Quinow and Mrs. Bishop have previously described. I also had a contact from Legendary Lake Mills asking for clarification on the input that we're seeking from them regarding the two Sandy Beach restaurant proposals.
Mr. Fields?
Basically, I've received all the same emails that have already been mentioned, so nothing new to add other than them.
All right, thank you. So we're going to move into questions and public comment. There is no public hearing tonight, so the public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made on items... Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you've registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes. State your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. So with that, the floor is open for public comment. Anybody like to make public comment?
Mr. Waters, I just want to make a clarification. I'm Lee Levertan.
Yes.
I'm on the agenda. Am I speaking at that time, or am I speaking now as part of the public comments? Do you want me to wait for the...
We can pull you up during the agenda item. How's that? Okay.
Great.
Yes.
I cannot hear him.
He was just asking if he should comment now on the agenda item, and I'd clarified that we'd wait for the agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else tonight? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment. City manager's report.
I've provided you with several documents, mainly financial ones, the... And other than that, I don't have anything to add.
Is there any questions for Mr. Wilkie? I have one, Mr. Wilkie. In the summary, there was a tax settlement for 1.7 million. Can you... That's kind of a big nut there. Can you talk a little bit about that, what the background is on that?
By definition, for financial processes, tax settlement is when one collecting agency pays out to the other agencies. So the city of Lake Mills collects property taxes and then pays them out to the other agencies. In this case, it's actually a little bit of that and a little bit of moving TID money from one account to another to pay debt bonds. So it's a combination of that that adds up to 1.7 million.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Moving on to council members' board reports and acceptance of minutes from the Public Works Board minutes of March 8, 2022, and April 12, 2022, Economic Development Commission of February 24, 2020, and Board of Review minutes of May 4, 2021. Is there any comment or further explanation from board members or council members? All right, seeing none, we'll accept those minutes into our record. Now we're on council business. Item A is a discussion on updating the city manager's evaluation process and handbook. I'll open the floor probably to Ms. Curler.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Waters and my fellow council members. I asked to have this item on the agenda just to give you a progress report and also to ask for your input. As you recall, I volunteered to put together an update to the city's handbook for evaluating the city manager. I've been working with our attorney and HR director, Dan Drescher. So there's three documents that we provided you for tonight. The first is our existing handbook. It's labeled Resolution 13-01, so that was adopted by the council in 2013, and we've all had a chance to use it for at least one annual review process. I've also attached the Practices for Effective Local Government Leadership that are published by the International City Manager Association, so that's for reference. And then I just have a brief memo that outlines what Attorney Drescher and I are proposing to do in terms of revising the handbook, and that's where I would like to just... I'll just go through it briefly, summarize what our proposals are, and I'm looking for all of your input and ideas as we're working on that. So what we're proposing to do in general with the existing handbook and policy is change it kind of in four areas. So first, the annual review, we do want to keep an annual review process. Attorney Drescher suggested that that is best done in November, so that it's right after the budget, and so that's what we're proposing unless folks have other comments. We'd also propose to use the most recent version of the ICMA recognized practices that, as I mentioned, were attached. So then updating the performance evaluation form to reflect those 14 competencies, and then updating the questions that are in the current evaluation form so that they reflect those new competencies and also the priorities that we have as a community and the strategic goals, the qualifications that we have been talking about recently that we're seeking in a new city manager, and we want to make sure that that is reflected in the performance evaluation. And then one thing we're proposing to add is a self-assessment process, and I imagine that a number of us in our work experiences have had that as a part of our performance evaluation processes and employees, so we'd like to add that for a future city manager. So it gives them the opportunity to fill out the same evaluation form and rate themselves on how they feel that they did in each of the areas of expectation, and then that gives the council more input and more information for having conversation. I'll just go through these four items, and then I would really like to hear folks' input. So the second area that we're proposing is to keep mid-year check-ins. I think they're called communication sessions in the current handbook. Those would be more informal. They could be triennial, which I think is what we've been doing the last year, so two other times separated from the annual review, or we could do them quarterly if people feel that that would be warranted. And then the updated handbook would have just some simple guidelines and questions for how to conduct those, and we've been using some that Mr. Waters put together recently, and I think that's what we'd like to initially propose to put in the revised handbook, is just a simple set of questions on, you know, how's it going and where can we help you. So third area is something new that we'd like to add to the handbook, and that is to address the first 12 months of employment. Obviously, we're going to be hiring a new city manager. We want to make sure that we're giving them good support and having a lot of good communication. We may not be so fortunate as to have our next city manager stick around for 22 years, so I think it's a good thing to have in the handbook generally. So our new city manager will see the level of support and evaluation that they'll be giving them, and then that'll be something that's, you know, in our handbook if we need it in the future. Our idea here is that there would be more frequent check-ins. Again, they could be informal or formal, depending on what the council recommends, but more frequent check-ins either with the council president alone or with the full council during that first year. And last but not least, just some general editing and formatting. The text in the first part of the handbook is fairly lengthy and wordy, and so we want to just try to simplify that and be a little bit more concise and clear, incorporate the state statutes and our city code by reference without having to necessarily attach them for more pages, and then again revising the evaluation form so that's hopefully a little bit easier to use, hopefully a little bit shorter than it currently is. So those are sort of our ideas, are what we started to work on, but we didn't want to go too much farther before getting input from the rest of the council on your thoughts and ideas for how to move forward with this.
Any comments?
Do we need to motion to talk about things on this resolution before we begin discussing?
No, this is just an information session, basically.
All right, no.
Any other questions, comment?
As far as checking in on a regular basis, if we were doing it monthly or every other month, to me, that just seems like it might be a little quick. I was thinking more quarterly, just because with us meeting only twice a month, it almost seemed like we were babysitting them or micromanaging a little bit. I don't want to give that impression also, so that might be something we want to just consider, how frequent we want to do that as a kind of an efficient role, an official role.
Thanks, Steve. So would that be for the first 12 months of employment you're talking about? You think maybe that's a little too frequent?
Yeah. And that's just a gut feel, just we're bringing them in management, but maybe touching base quarterly?
Okay.
Just a second option.
Anybody else have thoughts on that?
I normally touch base on a monthly basis anyway.
Right.
From the president's side of things, so that would be normal compared to what's going on currently, so.
So maybe a monthly check-in with the council president and quarterly with the full council? Would that feel like maybe a good way to do that, especially for that first 12 months?
It's going to take a while just to get up to speed and kind of get a comfort level also. Whether the individual is...
I'm curious on that.
On the ICMA practices, I was pretty impressed with those. Those are pretty nice, and they're great guidelines. I think they would fit very well into the annual review, so it makes sense to incorporate that, so.
Great, I'm glad you feel that way.
Good job, whoever found that.
Well, they are in the current 2013 policy, but the international organization has updated them since then, so we figured just to kind of stay in line with that organization, which, you know, hopefully many of our candidates are certified or, you know, are educated through that process.
Credential.
Credentialed, yeah, that's the right word, yeah.
It'll go long ways.
So it should be something that they'd be familiar with.
It'll go long ways towards updating that process, so I welcome that for sure.
Okay. And as I said, you know, some of them may feel more relevant to our community than others, and so I think we can tailor, you know, how many questions we ask for each one, you know, to kind of emphasize the qualities and skills and performance that we're looking for here in Lake Mills.
Any other questions, comments?
Just a comment. I didn't specifically check these core competencies against what PAA gave us when we were assessing what we wanted in a city manager, but I do think, you know, when you're picking what we ask questions about or what to focus on, we can take what the city council already did and use those as our priorities and staff priorities when we're looking at what are the most important competencies to us as a city and a council.
Yeah, I really like that idea, thank you, that we all had to give input to our consultant for hiring the new city manager on what we thought were the highest competencies that we were looking for, and our department has had the chance to do that, too, so I think that's a good way to, you know, just use that information and reflect that in our objectives. What do people think about those mid-year check-ins? Does it, you know, once we get past the first year with the new city manager, does the triennial seem like a good frequency or quarterly? Do people have a preference?
I'm honestly okay with triennial check-ins. You know, we do see the city manager at every meeting, and we do have frequent workshops with them, so, you know, for the first year, if we wanted to do quarterly, that's fine, and then triennial from then on. But I think even not having your monthly check-ins, Mr. Waters, the rest of the council gets sufficient time with the city manager, that I would be okay with triennial.
And I would like to follow up with that by saying that I think it would also be based on what we feel the first year has gone like. So based on their performance in the first year, if we feel like that we can start letting go, then triennial is the way to go. However, if there needs to be some more closely monitored things that we probably should keep our thumb on, then, you know, we may have to maintain that same kind of policy for another year until they get more comfortable or more acclimated to what they have to do.
So I'm good with the try, and then based on feedback from council or feedback from the council manager, or the city manager, council manager, city manager. I can schedule a meeting if we need to do it more frequently for whatever reason, whoever's playing the president role at that point.
You'd like the triennial as well? I'm okay with you. And Dan, I don't know your thoughts on this, but I'm assuming, you know, the city manager reports to the council. If we have a concern about performance, we could schedule a meeting at any time.
Yeah, certainly.
Okay.
Lisa, I have one more question. With regard to the way that this person is evaluated, I know that there was numerical value that we needed to apply for each of the things that we were looking for when we evaluated. Steve, are we going to continue with that same kind of format? And if so, then perhaps what we need to look at is based on how they measure up, is what we would then determine what our next steps or phases would be, so that it's not gray. It's more objective and less subjective.
Yeah, I think that's a really good observation, and I think about, you know, we may be hiring somebody for the city manager role who has not been a city manager before, and so there may be some areas that we evaluate them on, particularly in the first year, that they're not excelling in, but that's because they're new in their position and they have room to grow. And so then those could be areas that we would, you know, highlight for training or, you know, additional support, whatever that might be.
So Ms. Quinow, what I think I understood you saying was if we keep the numerical system and applying a value to each competency, if somebody is below a certain established threshold, then we say there's some kind of remedial action needed. Is that how I'm understanding this conversation?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I could be on board with that.
Because nobody's going to be absolutely perfect their first year.
That, or even if you're like really low in this one category, that might be enough, if everybody is thinking the same thing.
And if they're low on a... If we see a trend, we, of course, would work with them to build that up and put actions, action plan in place to help correct that item or that trend, so.
I did do a little bit of online research, and it's pretty common, and I know in my own work career, the five scale, five different rating levels is pretty common. You know, there's sometimes a little slightly different wording that's used for them, but I think five is a good... So where the middle one is you're meeting our expectations, and so then something below that is, you know, something that then you want to discuss further.
So you had mentioned four. I have annual, the triennial, the new hire check-ins. What was the fourth one?
Oh, just the general editing that we want to do in the document. Those are the four areas that we want to work on, and Dan has already gotten to start at that, trying to have a little more brevity to it and a little focus in the text portion of the handbook. So I guess the only other thing I'll mention is that we'd like to try to bring this back to the council at the second meeting in June. That will get it out to the public for, you know, any comments that they may have, and that will also get it out to candidates, you know, who may be applying for the city manager vacancy, so they'll have an idea of what our expectations will be. And even if there's some editing and, you know, we don't adopt it at that meeting, at least that, you know, we'll have a kind of out on the street for our candidates to be aware of what our expectations are going to be.
Do we need to go through three readings on that?
No.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Item B is the Discussion Decision on HG Restaurant Group DBA Crawfish Junction Sandy Beach Food Truck Seasonal Lease. It's motion 22-5-2-1. Can we get a reading of the motion, please?
Motion 22-5-2-1 directing the city manager to execute an agreement with HG Restaurant Group LLC doing business at Crawfish Junction for the provision of seasonal food truck concession services at Sandy Beach Park.
All right, can we have a motion?
I move to approve motion 22-5-2-1 directing the city manager to execute an agreement with Crawfish Junction to provide food truck concession services at Sandy Beach Park.
I'll second. All right. Motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Mr. Fields. Can we have a staff comment on this, please?
Food trucks have now been in place for three years. This is consistent with the policy that we've had for the last however years on allowing to renew the food truck application, so we've reviewed it, feel comfortable with it, and recommend the council approve it for 22. You have anything to add, Dan? Nope, that sums it up.
So any questions or comment?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, Ms. Curler?
A couple of questions. I noticed in the agreement that, and we have two here in a row that I think are pretty much identical, it looks like there's an opportunity to renew for the next year. Did we have that in the prior ones, or is that something new that you've added?
That has been included in prior agreements.
Okay, okay. And then I'm curious, that 5% net sales, approximately how much revenue has that generated, and what program does that go to in the city?
So I don't have an answer to that question. Oh, go ahead. It goes into the general fund, and the amount for 2020 was $2,345. Crawfish Junction paid $888. Doyle's Dog paid $130, and then there was another one called Big Old Wraps that paid $73. And then in '21, Crawfish Junction paid $781, and Doyle's Dog paid $60, for a total of $891, so.
And then last question, are there any kind of costs that the city incurs in terms of staff time to, you know, monitor facilities or pay for utilities or clean up anything like that that we should be aware of?
We pay... We charge them for their utilities while they're there, and I don't think Doyle's Dogs uses any, but other than that, it's minimal.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, can we move to roll call?
Mr. Fields? Ms. Quinow? Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Bishop?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item C on the agenda is Discussion Decision on Doyle's Dogs Sandy Beach Food Truck Seasonal Lease. This is motion 22-5-2-2. Can we have a reading of the motion, please?
City council motion 22... City Council motion 22-5-2, uh, directing the city manager to execute an agreement with Doyle's Dogs LLC for the position, provision of seasonal food and concession services at Sandy Beach Park.
All right, thank you. Can we have a motion?
I move to approve motion 22-5-2-2 directing the city manager to execute an agreement with Doyle's Dogs to provide seasonal food and concession services at Sandy Beach Park.
A second.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Ms. Quidnow. Uh, can we have staff comment? Anything different here?
No.
Same thing, different company?
Same as last, uh, agreement that you just reviewed. Other than Doyle's Dogs, it's more of a cart and, uh, doesn't use any real facilities other, other than some space at the park.
Any comment or questions? All right, CNN, let's move to roll call vote.
Ms. Quidnow?
Hi.
Mr. Waters?
Hi.
Ms. Curler?
Hi.
Ms. Bishop?
Hi.
Mr. Fields?
Hi.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. All right, item D on the agenda is Resolution 22-24 County Highway Aid. Can, uh, we have a reading of the resolution, please?
Resolution 22-24 Petition for County Highway Aid.
All right, can we have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 22-24 Petition for County Highway Aid.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mr. Fields. Staff comment?
Well, we've, I know we've done this for 22 years. Uh, and it basically allows us to double our money. Uh, we put up the 3,000 plus dollars and they match it. And then we are required to use, uh, their services to get our money back. Uh, we use the oil and chip program. So the county does our oil and chip. And, uh, then they just deduct the $6,000 from the amount that they bill us.
Any questions, comments? I have one. It's grass growing season. Does this have anything to do with that medium that needs to be mowed all the time?
Nope.
Nothing to do with that? I thought it was the county that, that mows that.
The county does.
Okay.
And the county's paid by the state because that's state property. And, uh, the state pays them to mow it twice a year. Uh, the last time they said if they drove by, they would spray it once in a while, too. But that doesn't have anything to do with this. That's a, that's a contract with the state.
Okay, thank you. We'll see how it goes. I know it was a rough time last year, but, uh, hopefully we'll get better service this year. Yes.
Do we have an idea as to where the county highway aid is going to be used?
Uh, well, somewhere in, uh, either Brookstone or, um, uh, like up in the northwest corner in the Mildred Ray Street area or down in the southwest, um, like on, um, can't remember. No, um, a court off Grove.
A court?
Oh, oh, is it Lilac?
No, that's a loop. There's a short little court that heads west off of Grove Street, halfway up the hill.
Gotcha. Okay.
Connor.
There you go. Connor Court.
Any follow-up question? You're good. Any other questions? All right. Can we move to roll call vote, please, on Resolution 22-24?
Mr. Waters?
Hi.
Ms. Curler?
Hi.
Ms. Bishop?
Hi.
Mr. Fields?
Hi.
Ms. Quidnow?
Hi.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you. Item E on the agenda is Resolution 22-25 Approval Revised Title VI Plan Shared Ride Taxi. Um, can we have a reading of Resolution 22-25?
Resolution 22-25 Approving the Revised Title VI Non-Discrimination Program Limited English Proficiency Plan.
Can we have a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution 22-25 Approving the Revised Title VI Non-Discrimination Program Limited English Proficiency Plan.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Quidnow, second by Mrs. Bishop. Staff comment?
Um, sure. I'm going to take this one tonight. Um, the city clerk, Misty Quest, prepared a memo for you. I think that sums up the, the situation pretty well. Um, the second paragraph of the memo is, uh, kind of the, the crux of it. Um, because there's a grant program involved that the city clerk pursues every year. Um, there are federal funds that are involved and we are required to, um, have a policy in place that prohibits discrimination with regard to this specific service. Um, that is the purpose of Title VI in, in federal law. Um, we have such anti-discriminatory policy in many other areas of, uh, city government. Um, this specific policy had been updated originally in 2014, if I remember correctly. That is in the memo. Um, and it then was updated in 2017. It needs to be updated regularly. We receive this information and, um, this is the year to do that update. So, uh, staff certainly recommends adopting this policy.
Comment or questions? I, I understand to discrimination policy that we're working on here, but the program has, uh, a certain cost associated with, with it and we have a certain amount of funding. What, what do, what do those numbers look like as far as how much does it cost us to administer this program and how much funding?
Actually, I don't think this is negative for the city. I don't think this really costs the city anything.
It does.
Oh, it does, okay.
Uh, it's about, um, $80,000, $88,000. And about 20 of it is from the city. About $66,000 is provided federally. The city portion is somewhat funded by local fees. So there's not a lot of, um, local funds, probably less than $10,000.
I think that's, that's what we're allowed to do, collect up to the city contribution towards the program in local fees, if I remember correctly.
Right. We haven't changed it in a number of years and, and it always depends on the ridership. So some years the ridership's way up and some years it's down, particularly depending on what's going on at the school. The school pays a lot of, a lot of the fees.
Okay. Any other questions, comment? CNN, let's go to a roll call vote for Resolution 22-25.
Ms. Curler?
Hi.
Ms. Bishop?
Hi.
Mr. Fields?
Hi.
Ms. Quidnow?
Hi.
Mr. Waters?
Hi.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you. Item F on the agenda is Resolution 22-26 Rejecting the Purchase of Real Estate Located at 116 East Madison Street, Parcel 246-0713-1233-01, or 089. Um, Resolution 22-26, can you, uh, please read that, please?
Resolution 22-26 Rejecting a Proposal to Purchase 116 East Madison Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Okay, can we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 22-26 Rejecting a Proposal to Purchase 116 East Madison Street.
Second.
So motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mr. Fields. Staff comment?
Sure, I'll, I'll give you a little bit here. Um, as you know, we've, uh, gone through a process here. Um, Mr. Leverton, uh, is, is kind of winding up his, his business from what I understand and is willing to sell this property. He approached, uh, the city of Lake Mills and presented an offer this year after, um, previous negotiations with the city of Lake Mills on this topic. Um, the site had always been or has been multiple times identified as a potential site for, uh, LD Fargo Library Expansion. Um, in that vein, um, the original offer to purchase was presented to you in closed session. There was some discussion at that time. The direction that I received following that meeting was to negotiate an appraisal of the property. Um, we completed that in kind of the month in between. And then you guys were presented with that information, um, in the subs, in a subsequent meeting earlier this month. Um, at that time, um, in your discussion, you gave me direction with regard to, uh, preparing this resolution. Um, it also prior to that closed session, uh, you received, you know, certain correspondence, um, certain testimony or certain, uh, public input with regard to the transaction action. I think that there is, uh, um, a number of issues to discuss here. There's a number of, um, kind of entities in play, the library board, the library itself, uh, the city, um, your, your opinion, uh, Mr. Leverton, who graciously offered to sell the property. And then in kind of getting through that, you guys are at decision point tonight.
All right, thank you. Can we have a suspension of the rules to allow Mr. Levent, Leverton to speak?
I move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Is that second from Mrs. Bishop? It's a motion by Mr. Fields, second by Mrs. Bishop. All in favor, please raise your hands. 5-0. Mr. Leverton?
Thank you, council members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. Uh, my name is Lee Leverton and my wife is Lori Leverton. And we own the building at 116 East Madison Street, which is to the left of the library if you're facing it. It's a big white building. Uh, we've owned it for 30 years. I practiced there. I'm an attorney there. I'm a tenant. And we've had other tenants in the past. Um, recently, we've decided that we're going to sell the property. And whether the city buys it or not, it's going to be sold, um, to somebody. And I just wanted in background, um, to indicate that pre-COVID, the city had come to us. We never even thought about it, selling it to the city. We didn't even think about selling it at that time. Um, I wasn't going to retire at that time. So they came, we said, we wanted the income from the property. So our offer at that point was probably unacceptable and never went much further because COVID hit. Everything kind of fell apart at that point. Um, we were, we were still trying to get income. It was a, a cumbersome offer that we made, um, much different than the offer that we made this time. This time I went to the city and I said, look, I'm going to get a broker. It's going to cost me a lot of money to do that if I'm going to sell the property. I can give it to this, not give it, I can sell it to the city, uh, for a lot less. Um, the offer was at 417, $417,000. And as Attorney Drescher indicated, uh, the city did some due diligence. They had the building inspector come over. They got an appraisal, which came out at $427,000, which is $10,000 over, um, what we had asked, um, or are asking. So, um, they also had the library come and review it. The board came through the property. Um, it was offered for any city, city council people that wanted to come through could do that. Uh, the city attorney has been there many times, sometimes on business, sometimes, uh, in this case, to review it, to go through it with the building inspector. And my wife, Lori, was there as well. Uh, just some background, I grew up in Lake Mills, in the town though. I'm not a city resident, but we own city property, obviously. Um, and I've been here my whole life, pretty much. Um, at least being in practice, uh, in Lake Mills. I consider it my hometown. And so I've stuck around. So we've owned the building 30 years and now I've decided after COVID that maybe it would be best just to retire and, uh, enjoy traveling and be with my wife and, uh, take advantage of certain, uh, things that you can do when you're retired. So there were some concerns that I've heard, and the council can correct me if I'm wrong, that, um, where there's no plan, if we buy it, what are we going to do with it? And I guess I would say to you that, uh, my wife toured the library and it is filled with things, stuffed, um, with a lot of materials. They don't have room. And the property, the way it's set up, could be used immediately by the library. So there would be a short-term use of it. Uh, for example, when talking to the head librarian, um, they have a, they have a need for meeting rooms. Believe it or not, in pre-COVID, uh, in that year before that, they had four, over 400, um, requests for meeting rooms, for meetings. They couldn't fulfill those. They have one giant meeting area and they needed some for like if there's 10 students coming in or, and it was cumbersome. They just couldn't, they had to reject those, uh, proposals or requests. So at our office building, we have on the lower level, several, now they're offices, but they could be meeting rooms, uh, five of them, uh, large and a large, and then a couple smaller ones, then a reception area. And I think when you look at the outside, it's not a bad building from the outside, but in the inside, it's really nice. It's a lot of, about wood. It's old, historical, as we've already heard from other people, and I'll get to that. Um, so they would use it in that manner. Uh, the librarian also indicated that they have a bunch of historical records, that if they took those, and this is, you know, appropriate, to take the historical records, move them over to a historic, I wouldn't call it a landmark, but a historic building. Um, and there's one on each side of the library. Um, and, and they are prominent. They look nice, uh, for the downtown area. So I also want to talk about use. I don't count everybody that comes in the library. But I am next door and I've been there a long time. And even after COVID, I see a lot of use. I see that parking lot that they just built half-full a lot of times. I see whole classrooms outside on the porch, or not the porch, on the, uh, uh, the steps of the library leading in. You know, you see like 30 students and then I assume they also go in and do whatever they do in the library. I've used the library, obviously. Um, not as much now, but I did as a kid and I did when I was in high school. Um, so it's much more, the library itself, and, and the librarian, I think, said this in an email to you, something like this. That's more than just a place to take graduation pictures. I mean, it's more than just this beautiful building, which it is a beautiful building. It is a place where people can come and get together. And we see now with this COVID that that is really important, that they need a place to be able to meet, to be able to have one-on-one action with each other. We can't all sit at home and be on, you know, on, um,
Zoom.
Thank you, on Zoom. Um, there's no real contact at that point, at least not very effective. Um, so much-needed storage room, we have that upstairs. We have a garage. Um, so I also wanted to talk about, I mean, I've heard about the raise issue, which is the tearing down the building. And I think there's really been a misinterpretation, uh, a misperception regarding this issue. Um, i- if there was any time that there was a tear-down, um, thought of by the city, I think when the building inspector got in there and saw from the inside, I don't think that was ever going to be a factor. Um, could the, could the city do it at a later time if they bought it? Yes. But think about it, if I sell it tomorrow, and I wouldn't tear it down, and my wife wouldn't want to, if I sell it tomorrow, though, a developer could come in, raise it. It is not a historical landmark at this time. So the residents actually of the city would have more control if the city owned it. And in fact, the city could turn it into a historical landmark if they wanted to. And then it would be saved or protected, not saved. Um, so I would also say when the library people and the board So, I would also say when the library people, the board, they were in favor of, after the inspection, of the city purchasing it. So, the tear-down really wasn't being considered. I don't think that went into your decision to not buy the property. At least, I would hope not, because I don't think that's a factor. I know that the city has got a lot of projects, and these money amounts are probably not exact, but sewer treatment plant, 50 million, whatever the new school, elementary school is going to cost. But I guess I would ask you to look at monthly interest on those kind of projects. They could be at 3%. Just for the sewer plant, it would be 125,000 per month. How much is 417 of that? I understand that each individually, that's a lot of money, but on the tax roll, I don't think it would be that much money. And I think it would be a short-term use, but a long-term thought, because even if they don't tear it down, let's hope they wouldn't, they may want to stay there 30 years. They may want the income. And then the city's like, you know, this is a unique property. It's one of the, obviously, there's only two properties next to the library. And I would also say, you know, even if it stays there and they use it however they can, and they can attach it to it, they have room in the back, and it's a lot of room. It would be next to the parking lot. I don't know about expansion there, but that's something that could be considered long-term. It doesn't have to be decided now. Having said all that, it's your decision, and I just hope that another council doesn't regret this decision 10 years from now. And I think it's the right thing to do, being from Lake Mills, not just because I own the property. It just makes sense to me. And it's really not a win-loss situation for Lori and I. If you don't buy it, we'll sell it to somebody else, and maybe for more money, I would, that's what I would try to do. So, we would respect your, well, we will respect your decision, and you know, the city residents elected you. They want you to make those kind of decisions. And it reminds me of when I was a teacher in Sunday School for like 15 years, and I would tell my students, you know, if something good happens, you praise God. If something bad happens, you praise God. So, no matter what your decision is, it's going to be okay with us, and I just hope it's the right one in the end. So, oh, and then I did an amended resolution, which basically takes your resolution, Attorney Drescher's resolution, and flips it around so that you can accept the offer. Is there any questions? Otherwise, that was my...
Thank you for addressing the council, Mr. Leverton, and thank you for being civic-minded and approaching the city first. We really do appreciate that, and...
Thank you.
You know, it goes a long ways. I hope there's a lot of citizens out there like you that would do something like that, so thank you for that nice gesture.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Leverton? All right, any comments or questions on the issue to staff or on the topic in general?
I have a question, Attorney Drescher. I know that we typically have our verbiage in the affirmative. I noticed that this time around, we are in the not affirmative, and so...
That wasn't my request.
Was that your request?
Yes.
Okay, so when we vote, if we vote yes, we are basically saying no.
You are adopting the resolution that's in front of you, which is rejecting the offer, correct?
Okay, just wanted to see clarity.
And you're correct, we normally do vote on motions in the affirmative. But I said, "Let's go ahead and do it in this direction," because I felt the council was leaning in that direction, so I had the motion written that way.
Any other questions?
Mr. Waters?
Yes.
I don't have a question, but I guess I'd just like to make a comment for the audience and for, you know, fellow council members. This process has been a bit awkward, I think, for all of us, because we're required to convene in closed session to talk about real estate. And I think, in some ways, I was disappointed that, you know, sort of word got out about what was happening, but I think it also was helpful to us, because we got to hear from the community, we got to hear a lot of different perspectives on whether, you know, the people that we represent think we should purchase this property. So, I hope that people will continue to put their trust in us and understand that sometimes we can't talk about, you know, these issues until a certain point in time, but I'm glad that we have it on the record now, so that people know that we are trying to be transparent about these kind of issues.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions here? All right, CNN will move forward to a roll-call vote on Resolution 22-26. So, a yes vote is a rejection vote. Does that clarify that? All right, roll-call, please.
Ms. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is Item G, which is Ordinance 1233, Amending City of Lake Mills Ordinance, Section 548-3, License Issuance, Renewal, Suspension, or Revocation. I had problems with this last week. Revocation? Revocation. Or revocation. Sidewalk Cafe, this is the third reading. Can we have a reading of Ordinance 1233?
Ordinance 1233, Amending City of Lake Mills Ordinance, 548-3, License Issuance, Renewal, Suspension, or Revocation.
All right, so this is the third reading, so we will need a motion tonight. Is there a motion?
Okay, I move to approve Ordinance 1233, Amending City of Lake Mills Ordinance, Section 548-3, License Issuance, Renewal, Suspension, or Revocation. I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Ms. Quidnow. Staff comment?
I think that we've had Sidewalk Cafe in place for quite a while. This is a slight change in the ordinance that changes the fees and...
Is your mic on?
No. This is a slight change in the ordinance that changes the publication notices and the public hearings and the fees. So, the staff doesn't have much comment, other than I will say that we do do review of these, other than just the publication requirements, and it usually takes, most of them are done in the form of a napkin. So, we have to do a little bit more work sometimes. You know, if it comes in and it's well-done, we can do this in less than an hour. If it, you know, if it's not, then we have to kind of continue to add by asking people to update the information properly, and probably eventually, we end up out there measuring everything. So, the, and then codes change. So, like ADA used to require four-foot clearance, now it requires five-foot clearance, and you have benches, and bike racks, and planters, and all kinds of other things placed out there, the sandwich board signs. City is severely obligated under the ADA Act to make it so that it is handicapped accessible at all times. So, that comes into a significant portion of it, along with making sure that sidewalk's used properly. So, it generally will cost between $100 and $500 to review it.
Mrs. Bishop, do you have any comments? I know this is your resolution, or your ordinance?
Yes, so this is our third time talking about it. I won't reiterate a lot of the things I've said before and the main points of this ordinance. So, that is new information from Mr. Wilkie about the cost. I feel like the cost that we're setting forth in this ordinance is $75. What we're doing is two things. One, we're reducing the cost to business owners by $25, and simultaneously increasing the revenue that the city has previously gained from only $14 to now about $61. And we're doing that by removing that public hearing requirement. So, I feel like that that is a, that's better than what we've been doing, and it helps both parties, both the business owners and the city. And also, in regard to the second issue about removing the public hearing requirement, there was some conversation at previous meetings by this council about, well, does that reduce the likelihood of hearing about issues from our constituents? Or from constituents being able to say whether they want this at a public hearing? And my position is that it doesn't remove hearing from constituents. We still have public comment portions at every meeting. There's still a process whereby if there was an issue, a license could be revoked, and the person would have to reapply for the next season. And I have received one correspondence from a business owner that doesn't currently have a Sidewalk Cafe that would be considering it for this year. So, that would be an additional person, and again, it's small, our downtown is small, but I'm hoping this is an avenue where more people, more business owners would consider adding this to their business. So, those are my reasons for putting this forth. I hope that it's passed, and I'm open to any other questions or discussion.
Comments, questions?
I'd like to make a motion to amend Section 1C, the application fee for new or renewed license, to $100, and then the rest would stay the same.
I'll second that.
So, motion by Mr. Waters, a second by Mrs. Curler. Any comment or discussion on that?
I'm supportive of that. Mr. Waters, I appreciate you bringing it up. I think I support the streamlining, and I don't have a problem with eliminating the public notice. I think that does benefit both parties, but learning, you know, that there is still review time for the city. I think we have to kind of balance the staff time with the incentive that we want to provide to business owners and the value that we're giving a business to expand their operation out onto the city sidewalk. So, to me, I think that $100 is a fair, fair price balancing all that.
Any other comments or questions?
So, I, knowing now the fee, I'm struggling a little bit. I don't currently support this amendment to $100, only because that puts business owners back where they were before for this year, and with the struggles they've had the last couple of years with COVID, I want a little bit of an incentive to maybe try something new. So, for those reasons, this time, I would be voting no on that increase back to $100.
I guess I look at the $100 fee as being a fair and equitable fee for a for-profit business. I know that we charge $40 for community organizations to use the park, and I know the Optimist Club has come after me a little bit for, they've paid $80 year-to-date to use the park twice, and I will be using it more, and will be exceeding this amount that a for-profit is actually using, and it is the city sidewalks. I know it's in front of their building, and they do maintenance out there, but it seems for a for-profit, $100 isn't a reasonable amount in comparison to what's being paid by other groups within the city.
Any other questions or comments? Can we have a roll-call on the amendment, please?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Bishop?
No.
Motion passes four one.
All right, so now we need to go back and approve Ordinance 1233 with the amendment, now that the amendment has been passed. Is there any comment or additional questions on the ordinance with the amendment? That's Ordinance 1233 with $100 fee. Mrs. Bishop?
I just want to be clear with voting no on the $100 amendment. I will still be voting yes on my total ordinance, because I do think it's an overall net gain to both parties still, and, you know, changing some procedural requirements to make it easier for business owners is still happening, and also making it easier to apply any time of the year for the rest of the season would still happen with this ordinance. So, I'm still voting yes on the overall ordinance as amended.
Do you have comments, Ms. Curler?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to thank Mrs. Bishop for bringing this issue forward and researching it and answering all of our questions over the last several meetings. And also, I think, you know, something I'm thinking about looking ahead, we've talked about updating the overall fees that the city charges, which some are in ordinance, some are not in ordinance, and so, you know, maybe this can be looked at again as a part of that larger issue. I'm sure we'll be revisiting fees, so we'll see how this goes.
Any other comments or questions here? All right, so let's have a roll-call on Ordinance 1233 with the $100 fee.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Item H on the agenda, Ordinance 1234, Petition for Anexation from Ryan Malone, Parcel 018-0713-1214-002. This is the first reading. Since it is the first reading, we don't need a motion. Can we get a reading of the Ordinance 1234?
Ordinance 1, 2, 3, 4, An Ordinance Annexing Territory to the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin. Parcel Identification Number 018-0713-1214-002. City of Lake Mills, or the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does here ordain as follows. Section 1, Territory Annexed in accordance with Section 6, 6.0217, Wisconsin Statutes, and the attached and incorporated petition for direct annexation by unanimous approval, signed by an agent of the owner of the property proposed to be annexed and filed with the City Quirk on or about March 22, 2022. The following territory in the Town of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, is annexed to the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin. Section 2, Effective Annexation, From and after the date of this ordinance, the territory described in Section 1 shall be part of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, for any and all purposes provided by law, and all persons coming or residing within such territory shall be subject to all ordinances, rules, and regulations governing the City of Lake Mills. Section 3, Ward Designation, The territory described in Section 1 of this ordinance is hereby made a part of Ward 1, the City of Lake Mills, subject to the ordinances, rules, and regulations of the City of Lake Mills governing wards. Section 4, Severability, If any provision of this ordinance is invalid or unconstitutional, such invalidability or unconstitutionality shall not affect the other provisions or applications of this ordinance that can be given effect without the invalid or unconstitutional provision or application. Section 5, Effective Date, The ordinance shall take effect upon passage and publication as provided by law.
Thank you, Lori, and I apologize when I said it was going to be an easy meeting for you. I forgot that there was a reading, so... But thank you, you did a great job.
Thank you.
All right, staff comment?
The petitioners have filed that annexes territory to the City of Lake Mills from the Town of Lake Mills. It's located at the northwest corner of... It's located at the northwest corner of Tyrionian Park Road on Mulberry Street, right at the ramp, butts up against the back of the interstate and next to Country Campers. It's a little over 2.3 acres, and should be any problem to have it annexed, they'll have full access to water and sewer.
Yeah, go ahead.
There is, there is an issue with the application, and I have discussed this with the, the representative, Mr. Malone. The title is held in Purity Real Estate. They identify Kingbird Real Estate, a different holding group, in the application as the current title holder. I've been told that there was a deed that has not been recorded yet, that they completely intend to record and to kind of fix this issue prior to future development of the property, prior to this annexation going through all the way. So, we have a little bit of time on that, because there are three readings, but I would want to stay abreast of that and make sure, I mean, everything needs to line up. There's state and county review of this particular process, so I want to make sure that everything does line up appropriately. And if that's not completed prior to that third reading at that time, I will recommend that we hold off on the process until that's done. It's not an issue at this point, is, is, they have separate, separate holding companies. It is definitely the same business. It just seems like there's a procedural aspect in their processes that hasn't been completed yet. So, a little bit of patience on that may be necessary, but I'm very confident that it is going to come to fruition as intended.
Thank you for clarifying that. Any, any questions or comment? Ms. Curler?
Oh, yeah. Attorney Drescher had questions about what does the municipal boundary agreement require? There's a reference to it, but of course, you know, the agreement isn't attached, and I noticed for Aslan and Milford, there's like a requirement that the city would pay the equivalent in taxes for five years. Is it something similar to that with the Town of Lake Mills?
Yes, we adopted the statute in our municipal boundary agreement, so they are due five years of continued segmented tax payments on this property. The city, if the property is developed out, will have right to the increase in valuation and the tax that's produced from that increase in valuation immediately.
So, it'd be, if there was a five years, it would be the current valuation?
The basis, right. What it enters into the city as it's annexed, that's correct. The current valuation. Good job.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comment? Mrs. Bishop?
Mr. Drescher, I admit I may have missed this in the documents, as I'm still looking here, but the last annexation we did was for residential. Do we know how this is going to be zoned now, moving into city territory?
Yes. It comes in as rural development, I believe. That is the typical holding classification when it enters into the City of Lake Mills. However, with this process, as we go through this, there will also be a rezoning classification that is going through a plan commission process that you'll see eventually running alongside parallel to this. So, they do intend to rezone the property as some form of commercial development.
You have follow-up?
Thank you. No, I just wanted to say thank you.
All right. Any other questions? See and none will move on. A recommendation for future agenda. So, Mrs. Bishop, I think you had said something about the UTV ATV?
I did, yes, so.
And Mr. Fields, you had also commented about that in the past.
Correct. Yeah, and I've started talking to the police chief and a few other locals about the same thing. We met with the UTV club last fall, so if that's something you wanted to take team, however you want to do it to.
So, I've got a draft ordinance going with Mr. Drescher, and that's what I was going to get on the agenda in June. I can get with you, Mr. Fields, before that to go over any other concerns you may have, or we can just talk about it.
Okay. That'd be perfect.
I just want to make sure we're not working two different directions here, and make sure everybody's on the same page.
Mm-hmm.
So, you guys will just get together?
Sure.
Fantastic.
Excellent.
All right. Any other agenda items? Yes?
Just with respect to the city manager hiring, I wonder if we want to have something in open session, just as far as a progress report, and what our schedule is going to be for public involvement and interviews and so forth, so that the community's aware of our timeline.
Were you prepared to comment on that tonight?
Yeah, on that topic. The job announcement has been posted. You can find that on PAA's website, on all of our social media, the city's social media. The announcement is on the city website as well. I understand that they've gotten some significant feedback already, a number of applicants already. That will be open until, I believe, the end of, oh, I don't know the exact.
Early, early June, I think.
Yeah, I believe it's like mid-June. Is that right?
That was June 9.
It is, the announcement is online. I will go to that right now.
Or 10?
June 4, actually. Saturday, Saturday, June 4 is the closing date. It was originally posted on May 4, so that month. We certainly can extend that if necessary. They're confident in the response that we've gotten so far. Definitely expect more. There's been inquiries. So, we're speeding towards kind of new movement on this topic. I believe, and now this isn't, we don't have a date or anything scheduled, but I believe that PAA is going to want to meet very shortly after that June 4 date to go over their kind of, the, the applications that they've received, their recommended pile, and I believe at that point, the council is going to kind of design what the rest of the process looks like, the amount of public feedback, the, what, what that process looks like, what the interview process looks like, and basically everything from there. So, right now, we're gathering those applications, and we're going to be prepared to move forward, it looks like, here, early June, mid-June. I don't know that it will be on the first meeting of June, that's June 7. Some movement around there and everything, so the second meeting of June is probably more likely. Special meetings and such, we can discuss that as that application period closes, but I know that PAA is going to be interested in getting in front of you, so.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions here on agenda items?
You'll have the EMS item, and you'll have the audit.
I don't think your mic is on.
You'll have the EMS item and the audit.
The audit for what?
The city.
Annual audit?
The annual audit.
Okay.
The accounting audit? Financial audit?
Yes, the financial audit.
All right. And I also will circle back on the Mill Pond. I know that it wasn't a high priority for us, but five years down the road, we need to kind of look at it from that approach, and I think as a committee or as a council, we should review if we want to do an ad hoc at this point, or if we wanted to lay that another year or two, but I think it's a discussion we should have. All right. See and nothing. If we can get a motion to, yep.
I do have one more.
Thank you.
So, the.
Just got that in, just in time.
I'm sorry. It slipped my mind until that second. I've been working with the city clerk on the community-centered policy update that the council members had discussed last fall, and personally, I'm coming to an impasse on some decisions on which way to go with certain items. So, I think I'm going to do similar to Ms. Curler, draft a memo to the council outlining those issues for our discussion at a future meeting. I'm hoping to do that for June.
Okay. Great.
I can't miss this opportunity. I talked about the city manager hiring process and everything, and there's just this great video out there that everybody should take a look at.
I thought we were going to pass over that. I was, I was going to say, it's amazing that we still have applicants.
High production value and a totally competent and competent message from our, our president of the council, so definitely, please, check it out.
Is that on the city website?
It's not on the city website, however, it is on like the city YouTube channel. It's, it's available on social media. It's not specifically on our website.
We should get it on the website.
Michelle?
It's in the job announcement.
That way, it's available, like it's easy to find.
There is a link, if you click, click the job announcement itself, there is a link in blue that says, watch the video by clicking here, so, please do.
Thank you for mentioning that. It was a lot of fun doing the video.
Yeah, it was.
And they did a good job editing and, and helping me out there, so I appreciate it. All right. So, if we can get a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute Section 19.85, 1E, deliberation or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specific public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session.
I'll make a motion to convene into closed session for the reasons stated.
Second.
So, motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mr. Fields, all in favor? Please raise your hand, 5-0. So, we'll move into closed session, and then we'll reconvene after that and adjourn the meeting, but we will not come back in front of the video cameras for that. Thank you for coming tonight, and we'll see you 1st of June.